Good evening, welcome to the joint meeting. Uh, the Greenfield Intelligence Commission and City of Greengul as we discuss pay and benefits at this time. Um, I think we need someone to represent or lead the city council.
Well, we're required, but the mayor's not present, mayor pretends not present, so we would require some council by motion and vote.
Can I nominate PJ Condon?
Okay, is that PJ on the phone? Yeah, oh, okay. But I don't think you can preside today.
Right, we still need someone.
It's on you.
We should need a motion and a second.
I nominate PJ Condon.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Condon.
This is scary. Particularly if you don't have your agenda.
It's almost a good start.
Switching from race and staff.
Good. So do I need to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
He's got a gavel down there.
Thank you.
You have to knock on a piece of wood, you can use my head.
I'm not gonna say no. Call meeting to order.
Approval of agenda.
We need to approval of the agenda.
Seven seconds.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for the Greenfield Intelligence Commission, uh, Mr. Condon.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, sir. Ask for approval of the agenda.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's help them to read the public comment period.
Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of public hearings conducted at the same time or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. Total of 30 minutes allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register for the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allocated 30 minutes expire. If time remains after all persons who registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allocated 30 minutes expires.
No one is registered.
So is there anybody here who wishes to speak during the public comment period?
Shannon, you never speak at these. You always come. You always listen.
I'm working my way up to this.
Would there be none that's?
We need to approve the minutes from the September 19th, 2016. Joint meeting.
So move this chairman. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the proposed minutes from September 19th, 2016. Seven seconds. You got a motion in a second. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
At this time, we'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Condon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the joint city and GUC Pay and Benefits Committee, which is comprised of council member Glover, council member Smiley, Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Jacobs met on March 23rd, 2017, and the result of this meeting was recommendations to be considered by both the city council and the GUC board commissioners in the joint meeting today. I'm going to ask Chris Paget and Michael Cullen if they would to please review some of the materials that are presented to the committee and then review the recommendations of the committee to full board and council. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Uh, so our typical process for this meeting, the spring meeting, the joint board meeting, uh, is that a couple of months back, uh, the HR departments go and begin to collect data related to, to market pay. Uh, the idea is to find out what's going on in the, uh, in the market related to, uh, to compensation, to, to, uh, to pay. They gather that information, they assemble it, uh, and present it to the joint, uh, Pay and Benefits Committee, uh, which Mr. Condon just, just mentioned who was on that committee. Uh, the committee makes a recommend, makes recommendations to the boards for their joint meeting, uh, for your consideration here today. The, uh, data I'm going to share with you today comes from primarily from three different groups of sources. Uh, we have salary surveys from six reputable survey groups, public sector benchmarks, which include 26 municipalities and utilities, uh, that were also included in the 2010 pay plan study, and local private employers totaling 14. So let's begin with the, uh, with the wage surveys for 2017. Uh, as you can see here, we, we use six reputable survey firms, Aon Hewitt, Capital Associated Industries, Hay Group, Mercer, Towers Watson, and World at Work. And as you can see, they're, uh, they're relatively consistent. Uh, I think the high, uh, highest percentage of projected wage increase was 3.1% provided by World at Work, while the lowest was 2.7% provided by Capital Associated Industries. Uh, the average of all of them was 2.95%. And, uh, I will note that traditionally, historically, uh, the city and GUC have used CAI as the primary benchmark, not the only one that's considered, but, but that is the primary one. For the public sector benchmark organizations, uh, which include the 26 municipalities and utilities, 24 of these have provided last year's data. 22 of the 24 did provide pay increases last year. Uh, all 24, including the two that didn't, the average pay increase last year was 3.2%. As a reminder, uh, the, the, uh, city council and GUC board, uh, approved a 2% uh, pay increase last year. Fifteen of these organizations provided their projections for next year, uh, and the projected average increase for next year was also 3.2%, so relatively consistent. Uh, details related to who is included in those benchmarks, uh, is included in the details that are included in your packet.
And I'd like to say that the, the way that these, uh, 24 organizations were selected is back in 2010, comprehensive salary study was conducted by GUC and, and the council and city. And as part of this overall compensation study, Seagull Waters selected various different municipalities, government agencies, uh, utilities that were very similar in nature to that of the city and to GUC. And those, uh, those 24 have been consistently utilized in order to prepare the data for both GUC and GUC.
Mike, you know, we had this discussion at our last council meeting in budget, and you know, this, this group is called Pay and Benefits, so we often see a lot of metrics regarding pay, but where are the metrics we already identified? Because we need to look at the total package, we need terms of considering taking a big decision in terms of who the things hold.
And, uh, as part of our presentation of the, uh, of the proposed budget draft, we did provide for these 24, uh, organizations, a comparative analysis of both the health insurance and the 401k contribution of the employer. And what we found is that on average for those 24 organizations, health insurance contributions by the employers were about 75% as compared to about 84% for the city of Greengul, whereas on the, uh, on the 401k perspective, on side, the, um, the 24 employers basically averaged about 5% of salary, uh, contributions into the 401k supplemental retirement program, whereas the, the city of Greengul's was, uh, I think, less than 2%. So when you weigh the 401k with respects to the health insurance, it was basically about a wash in the way that the benefits, uh, kind of worked out. Now, what we're also in the process of doing, I think you had asked at that, that meeting, to get a comparison of the top four or five employers within the county and see how we compare to, to those. When you look at the county of Pitt, I think our last three years, their average increase has been about 3.3%. We're still going to be got some of the benefit information for, for, uh, those employers.
The conclusion of it was that, um, that is, but it's in terms of these are our peers, if they are, that their benefits are generally equal actors.
That's right. And when you, when you weigh the, the, the health insurance contribution relative to the, the supplemental retirement contributions, it's about wash.
Very good. So for our local private employers, which include the 14 local businesses, nine of those responded and gave us their data for the current year, uh, reporting the current year pay increases average 3.1%. So most of you were here, uh, in the spring of 2015, when, uh, the city and GUC conducted the five-year true-up pay study. Um, since that time, we've now had two budget processes that have occurred, uh, and each of those last two years, uh, the, the salary increase provided to our employees was 2% each year. Uh, what this table is intended to do is to look at those three categories of trying to establish what the market is, uh, CAI, public sector benchmarks, private sector employers, and look at what they have done cumulatively over the last two years regarding pay as compared to what we have done. And the purpose of doing this is simply to, to identify, are we tracking with market or not? Uh, as you can see here, that there is a slight deficit. Uh, when you look at the, uh, the CAI, it's, it's about one and a half percent. For the, uh, public sector benchmarks, it's 1.7%. For the private, uh, local private sector employers, it's, it's just over 1%. So what does that mean? Well, it, what it means is that we're two years into a five-year process. At the end of the five-year process, we have the full pay, pay plan study. Uh, and, and if, if one or all these indicators are, are accurate really regarding what we're doing with market, uh, we are deviating slightly from what the market is. And, and financially, what that means is that, uh, if these numbers are correct, then, then, uh, you know, the, the difference between the private sector of the last two years and what we've done is about, between the two organizations, about $724,000, uh, on up to potentially, uh, what the difference in the other public sector entities is 1.7%, which is about 1.2 million. So we just provide this to show that, that, you know, as looking at percentages is one thing, but there are dollar amounts tied to these percentages, uh, that we don't want to get too far out of line with the market, simply because there's a cost to doing that This slide, uh, is just some additional information, you know, recognizing that 2% has been the number we've fallen on the last two years, recognizing that, uh, city council and their, uh, uh, financial plan has 2% kind of earmarked in there for, for next year, for pay increases for employees. Uh, we took a look at, at that last chart, and we've added a line to show what the projections are for next year for these various entities, and what would it look like if we did 2%. Um, and what you see here is, is that deficit begins to grow. So each year that we're out, out of line with the market, uh, that number's going to grow a little bit. So again, putting dollar figures to this, um, you know, the difference with, with the high is, uh, is would be with the public sector benchmarks, which would be 2.9% or effectively falling 1% behind each year over the three-year period. Uh, total cost would be about $2 million. Uh, the low would be with the private sector employers, which is 2.15% or, or about 1.5 million dollars. So just information we wanted to share with you to show that as we, you know, if it's our goal to pay in line with market, and we're trying to monitor what the market is each year, each year that we deviate from what that market is telling us, uh, there is a financial price to pay at the next true-up.
Mike, of the city's portion of that, what, what percentage of our total salary comes out of the general fund versus?
About 86%. Okay, so most. Yeah, you can, you can say for every 1% is about $50,000, uh, in other funds. Non-geneal.
And so with that, uh, I'll, I'll just leave you with the joint pay and benefits committee recommendation, uh, and it is that the city and GUC fund an employee pay adjustment of 3.2% for fiscal year 1718, applied as deemed appropriate by each entity in order to maintain market competitiveness. The 3.2% employee pay adjustment is recommended because it aligns with the fiscal year 1718 average pay increase projection for our public sector benchmark organizations, while minimizing the cumulative difference of the below-market pay increases since the five-year true-up market study was conducted in 2015. And so that's the recommendation of the committee. I would like to ask the four members of the committee, uh, just to validate that that was in fact the recommendation and that we've captured it accurately, uh, because we've not shared this with you since the packets went out. Is everybody comfortable that that's what the recommendation was? Happy to answer any questions?
As, as far as the, uh, the numbers you're showing for the public and the private sector, um, some of the, uh, I guess some of the companies that you, that you showed, uh, I think it was in earlier slides, are those held constant through this whole thing?
I'm sorry.
This whole presentation? Are they the same companies for the private and public from 2015 through 2017?
I'm pretty sure they are, yes.
So the exact same ones?
They've been the same since 2010.
Do you have you stretch it out any further beyond that? So you went up to 2010?
No, that's when the comprehensive study was conducted, and those benchmark organizations were established, and we've used those in our constant since 2010.
Okay, so they're the exact same. Okay. As far as, how far out, have we looked at how far back they go? Have there been any other years that maybe we were above what these other agencies gave as far as increases in salary?
Well, we use the, the, um, 2015, the true-up, we use that as our starting fresh point, because we realigned everything at that point. So anything prior to that was really moved at that point.
We, we have, we have not collected all this data every year since 2010, because when, 2010, we had our full pay plan, so we knew at that point exactly where we were related to market. We had another one in 2015, a five-year true-up. So really, once you get the consultant to look at everything, it's almost a reset button for being in line with market, because they're telling you where you are or aren't. We, we were slightly not in line with market in 2015, and it ended up costing about $400,000, I think is where, where we ended up among both entities to, to bring it up to what the consultant was telling us the market rate was.
325,000.
So we weren't far off then, probably, because that's a minimal amount. Is that right?
But if you think about 2010 through 2014, those were years where the, the economy was sluggish, struggling, and, and there wasn't, uh, as, as aggressive of pay increases across all these entities.
That's a good question with the private industry side. Did those metrics companies that you're comparing, did they have any layoffs during that period?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the last part of that.
So were there any elimination of positions or layoffs during that period of time those companies were using as metrics in the index?
That wasn't a question that we asked him, um, the last few years, we didn't ask those questions, so I can't say for certain.
The second part of the presentation to the joint committee was regarding salary structure and a recommendation to make an adjustment to the salary structure. So Michael, if you would address that.
As part of the 2015 comprehensive study, we did, as, as we've discussed, a five-year true-up at that point in time to ensure that our, our pay structure was, remained competitive with the market. As part of that recommendation, uh, the recommendation as part of that study was that on an annual basis, we review our current, uh, pay structure to ensure that it continues to be, uh, in compliance and in competitive with the market. Now, Seagull Waters works, uh, with World at Work Salary Survey in order to provide us information about salary structures and comparative to that of the market. And overall, for next year, World at Work Survey is projecting a 2.1% increase in pay structures. Now traditionally, the city and GUC have voted to adjust the pay structures based off the World at Work Survey, so as to maintain a, a competitive pay structure. And what this means is that the minimum, the maximum of each pay grade would increase based off of the, the benchmark from, from that survey. Last year, it was 2%, so the minimum and the maximum for each pay grade, the, um, the city and, uh, and GUC voted to in, in, uh, increase those minimum and the maximums by the 2%. This year, uh, that, the result of that survey again, projected for next year is 2.1%. So with that being said, the, uh, the, uh, the recommendation from the committee was to adjust the minimum and the maximum of each pay grade by the 2.1% coming from, uh, from that survey. This adjustment will have minimal impact on our overall financial position, given where each individual employee currently sits on the, on the salary structure, but it will actually allow us to, uh, more positively impact our ability to, uh, to, uh, maintain competitiveness with the market and to, uh, and to recruit new employees to both the city and GUC.
This is actually an interesting piece, and it's, every time we talk about it, I, I get only a little clearer, and then I go to sleep and I lose it. If I recall, what we found when we did the true-up was that our pay plan, and I'm hoping Leah can tell me here, that our pay plans, you know, tended to be reasonably close to market, but that us, a disproportionate percentage of our employees are actually well below the midpoint, because we do not give raises, and so we get people not migrating away from the midpoint back to the baseline, because the baseline keeps going up when you change the pay plan, but the, the rate, the, the people who were maybe near the, near the midpoint now come down lower. I understand this is not as big a problem with GUC because of, they have a different approach to this, but, um, am I speaking, I'm depicting that accurately? So even if our pay plan is at market, a lot of our employees, you know, really aren't, you know, they may be, have enough expertise and experience that one would assume they were at the midpoint, but they're in fact not.
And, um, council member Smiley, in fact, of the 700 positions that we have approved with the city, approximately 70% of those are below the midpoint. At about 88, 87, 88% of midpoint.
What is the driving reason for that?
Tension or? Tension has, uh, has much to do with it, turnover, uh, rate, as, as positions continue to turn over, the higher, much lower than, than the, the midpoint, that also impacts it.
And what are the recommendations that came forth from the committee, and I'll turn it over to back to you guys in the committee, if they have any comments.
One thing I would say, just that, um, good committee, good folks that were appointed by both the city and Greengul, and GUC, and Smiley, and Toby, and, I mean, I'm not sure, I wasn't the good one, but I was on the committee. Um, but I appreciate the questions, and there are a lot of questions, uh, as part of the committee discussion, and, uh, you appointed the right people, um, to, to make sure it was accurate and that the details were taken care of, and, um, so I think the recommendations were sound, based on sound data, based on thorough discussion, and so I just wanted to thank the, the, the committee, it was the work that it's done. Hopefully we can look forward to it.
And also, um, in discussing, we looked at, um, our benefits packages towards our insurance, and, um, insurance is going to go up 6%. When you're now employees of 2, um, 3.2%, so insurance goes up, it's going to go up a bit. And that if we don't do this, then it's going to knock them back into compression.
And council member Glover, I'd like to also add to that, and I apologize, I didn't say this earlier, but, you know, the city and GUC are in the middle of a three-year plan, basically to, uh, to adjust our employer contribution to the, or the employee contribution to the overall health insurance cost up to, to 80%. And, um, that is, we're in the first year of that, so what we'll see is that the employees' percentage of the overall cost continue to rise, which will then bring us more in line with the overall average that we see for municipalities. So.
Yeah, our employee, uh, our employee rate increase on the health insurance plan last year was 11.2%. And the way we got there was we took the trend, which we were told was going to be 8.2, and we added an additional 3%. And the three-year strategy that, that these two boards agreed with was that we would do that over the course of three years to push that cost share to 820. So we would expect, if we follow that plan, the employee share of health insurance to go up again this year by 3% plus 3%.
I would just reiterate that, you know, what we're seeing is that we're falling behind market, and that, that's not a sustainable place, sustainable place to be, you know. You're going to end up paying market one way or the other. Either we can give the, our existing employees a raise that will keep them, you know, at least near it, or, you know, eventually they will, you know, they'll go somewhere else, and you'll have to hire somebody new. And when you hire a new person, you hire a market, right? And that's the definition of it. So the question is, do we want to have the people we've got at market, or do we want to have completely new people at market? And I think that we, you know, the city profits and the utility as well, um, when we, you know, when we compensate the people that we have that are doing the job, that know how to do the work, at, um, at a level equal with the, what they can find out in the, uh, among our competitors.
Rick, I appreciate it. It's sort of easy to catch up on the money side, but there's a reputational loss, too, when you say, well, we're going to try to not stay up, and all of a sudden, you pay 375,000, whatever that number was. I think employees want to know that, um, that they're working for somebody that's looking out for, uh, making sure they're paid what they're worth based on market, and that they're not caught in some, you know, drastic modulation of, of pay. And so I think, um, I think you're dead on in terms of it's not good business from more than just one angle. I think it's not good business in terms of what, how you want your employees to view us as leaders, and what they mean to us in terms of what we do.
Michael, we, we, uh, do a two-year budget, and you forecast a year ago what you, you anticipate the revenues would be as a city. This year, were there any significant deviations from that to positive revenue?
That's a good question. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. Last, uh, last month at a council meeting, we reviewed the general fund budget, and, um, it was balanced at a 2%, with a 2% increase in salaries, 1% merit, 1% market. And the one questionable line item that we had with, within the revenues was sales tax, because we've seen sales tax do really good this year. And we tried to stay conservative in that projection. There might be a, a touch of wiggle room with concerns of that revenue, but it does not, um, it does not materialize to the, uh, the amount that we would need in order to gain another 1% increase in salary, if that answers your question.
We see many forecasted, um, other revenue strengths that didn't meet.
No, that's not, that will have, um, a detrimental impact based off of what we have, currently have within the projected budget for next year. I think we pretty much sow into a, uh, an area that we can expect with minimal growth in some of those, uh, other revenue areas that we will not be too.
So the GUC amount that the?
Oh, yeah, well, the, the two-year, the, uh, well, the memorandum of understanding that was just approved by the council, we'll take care of that.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, very nice.
Item, I want to commend both boards for working together, both staffs for coming together on that.
I would echo Mayor your statement there. I'd add to Joe Butler's comments in terms of when you lose individuals, institutional knowledge walks out, we're also, uh, relearning firms, so we really are really benefits by having that continuity of trained personnel employees to be far out of our past.
Have we as a city looked at, uh, prior to this meeting, what or how we could budget a 1.2% increase? Would it be roughly about what, $450,000?
Well, yeah, um, specifically, a 1.2% would be $450,000 to the general. A 1% would be approximately $375,000. I have not modeled a, well, a 1.2% increase in 450. I have started to, um, to analyze a $375,000 impact that walks in, and going back to what council member Smiley said last month. Councilmember Smiley said last month, that council made around a 3 percent increase. Just in case, that would be the direction that we wanted to potentially move. And yes, it would include the likes of adjustments to the sales tax revenue to get a few more dollars there, looking at some savings that we may have with some positions out of the golf course, looking at maybe one or two capital projects that we have in the budget that do not appear to be feasibly moving forward as quickly as we want, so we may be able to delay that a year or so, based off of conversations we've had with council members in small group meetings, as well as looking at some of the discretionary increases that we have within the budget for our departments, and not have an impact on public works and recreation and parks, which are the two areas that are increasing in the level of services that we're providing, that we need to be able to match with increases in the budget so that we can maintain that level of service. So trying to balance that out, we have started to look, I have started to look at what it would take in order to get that done. In my opinion, it would be feasible to do so and not have a significant impact on future year resources, because a lot of the reductions or the redirections that would be required in order to do that would be reoccurring redirections. So we wouldn't have to worry about that being a one-time impact. But it's something that would take further analysis. I do, I would like to have one more month of sales tax revenues, which state releases on around the 10th of the month. So in May 10th, I'll get through March revenues. That will help certify in my mind that what we've got is a pretty strong connection.
Would you consider this to be something that could be sustainable? I know you kind of touched on that a little bit, in the future, with future growth patterns of our city. As we continue to grow, services are going to increase. Would it be something that would be able to be sustainable at 3.2 percent on a regular basis without increasing taxes?
You know, I learned a long time ago that each year's budget kind of stands on its own. So I think, well, I would love to say that, yes, we could continue to provide those type of increases from year to year. I can't, in good conscience, sit here and tell anyone that, not knowing what the impact of the economy is going to be, what the impact of the local economy will be. I think that if we were to create a budget with a 3 percent increase in it, yes, it would sustain to the future, but to discuss future salary increases, I don't think we can go to that level. Again, just because of the fact of health insurance. I think on a consistent basis, you might be looking at health insurance increasing a good 5, 6, even 7 percent each year. That's just to maintain the status quo and move closer to 80 percent cost share.
Correct me if I'm wrong, at the city, if we, beyond fire and rescue and police, if we not hired anybody or created additional positions over the last two years?
Last year, the only positions that were included within the budget were 3 percent, three positions for fire or rescue, and a merit pool increase of four to eight police positions. And this year, we have an additional two to four, not this year, next year's budget, we have an additional two to four that would bring us up to the 10 additional positions over a two-year period in the case department. That's it.
Dave, or anyone else that could maybe answer the question, staff's tracking this. You know, Tony Lowe's with the Dow's term because that creates revenue utilities, but for us, we're dependent on, in a delinquent state, many instances, we're dependent on other elements. What are our threats from the state legislature this year in terms of the budget? I know sales tax redistribution is still something high on the case. Also, property tax amnesty is a discussion for improvements made in properties. Can you delineate? Because obviously, we'd love to guarantee certain increases in pay, benefits, and things we want to do, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we're dependent on the revenue trends that we can depend on for year 2017, 2018. So can you give a view?
Sales tax, there are several proposals which may impact our sales tax revenue as far as potential shifting that's really from rural to urban. Again, of course, the league is, and the Better Bakers Association is there involved in that to try and attempt to ensure that everybody is potentially is held harmless. As far as construction and improvements, there have been some bills previously which addressed whether improvements are made prior to there being occupancy in there, as to whether or not that's subject to annual property taxes. Those proposals have been out there, but again, those are the ones that, the sales tax is the main thing, but again, there are, that we do have persons in place to fight for the city and its revenues.
Smiley, can you?
Certainly, GUC's business, but do you guys have, you guys already, Mike spoke into our ability to deal with the 3 percent raise.
We have budgeted appropriately. We have included in our budget that the board voted on last week, put their budget 3.5 percent, 1.5 percent merit, 2 percent market, so we are covered up to 3.5 percent.
To me, this has always been an important process, but it's always a challenging process because we want to keep as close to markets as we can, not exceeding in a lot of areas because we want to recruit and retain good people. But for us, it's always been a little difficult for me because we've got a lot of our budget process still left to do, and that's always been challenging. You know, we sat at this table before and had to commit to a number, and then based on budget, conditions had to go back and make an adjustment. So I always just want to be clear, whatever we do at this table is based on today's conditions. And once we go through the budget, walk through that process, we'll all continue, obviously continue to be as transparent as possible, and we became who we are. Because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers' dollars, and we've got to make sure we balance the budget without losing any services or finding proper levels of service citizens expect. So, you know, two years, we did a two-year budget and passed, and I kind of stand where that budget stands for our two-year process.
Well, for the purposes of debate, I'll move that we adopt the committee's recommendation and direct a manager to put a 3.2 percent pay raise into her budget. I understand there will be discussion on that. But the way we move forward here is we ask the manager to create a, at a certain level, and she tells us, you know, if that's feasible, and what the consequences of that would be. And then, obviously, if the conditions change, the consequences turn out to be unacceptable, then there is an adjustment that has to be made. But I think we have to, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the committee's recommendation, direct a manager in that way, and find out if that's feasible along the way forward.
Second. Discussion on that idea?
I mean, I think the employees need a raise, to be honest with you, from the city's perspective. You know, I guess I'm kind of young and fresh at this, but I've had a good year to kind of see where things stand in the city. And I'll be honest with you, I think the city personnel and employees, I think the morale is about as low as I've ever seen in an organization. I think that talking to employees and listening to their concerns and some of the things that they deal with, I just feel like it's almost, for lack of better words, poisonous at the city. And, you know, I think that my only hesitation with going and accepting that motion is that we're kind of, it's premature in the process. You know, it comes down to a standpoint of what can we afford, what can we not afford? You know, of course, we can't afford to lose good employees. We don't want to lose a good employee. But, you know, from a city standpoint, you know, we need to be mindful of what we have as far as resources. I've been thinking we need to make some kind of budget cuts for a while. You know, I'd be happy to sit down and look at more budget cuts to be able to increase our salaries for employees, but I'm a little hesitant to say, let's go ahead and pass and make it work. We're still almost two months away from finishing our budget process, maybe a little less than two months away from finishing our final budget. That's just what I think right now.
Got a question from Mr. Cowan. Just going back, I guess, to our planning retreat in February, I believe, if my memory serves me right, I mean, currently on our projected budgets already, a couple of years out, we're already projected to be running at a deficit at current, you know, current forecast state correct? Is that correct?
If you carry out, if you carry out the revenue growth with consistent growth, saying benefits at, salaries at 3 to 4 percent each year, yes, you would. That's why I was hesitant in saying that you could look at any year beyond this next one.
And that doesn't take into, you know, it doesn't account for what we're discussing today at 3.2, or as Mr. Smiley. It does not. So I mean, that's kind of concerning right there that we're already going to be at a deficit regardless, and now we're, you know, I'm with, I think everybody in this room right now wants to give our employees a raise. No one doesn't want to. But I think also, we need to have, we need to be frugal throughout this process as well and recognize that things could change, and even if they don't change, we're still going to be running at a deficit, so it's hard to commit right now.
How are we knowing with our compression? With our, I'm sorry, how are we doing with our compression?
Well, we addressed compression for 2015, and at that point, we felt like compression was at a good place. Obviously, if we continue along the road of below-market pay increases, we're going to run into the problem of compression, and that's one of the things we seek to avoid. And so, below-market pay increases resulted in pay compression. Does that, with that, answer your question?
Can I have asked a question during work?
Please.
This is exactly the same conversation we had last year. So what did we do? Because this is exactly the same conversation we had last year. Did we meet again? I can't remember.
No, the council took independent action last year, and we waited to take action.
Well, you're playing with other people's money. You know, we need to move forward. Somebody needs to call that way.
Again, I don't think that, you know, making, accepting this motion, or a version of it, I'm not, you know, people have given me other figures, I'm not wedded to 3.2 percent. If we don't ask staff to prepare a budget, you know, they're going to continue to be guided by the direction they've got, you know, which is make a budget of 2 percent. So, you know, at this later date, when you come around to it, and you finally do get to the point where you believe it is now time to make the decision, you know, you're going to be looking at a 2 percent number. You know, I think in order to build this option, in order to have the ability, you know, even the opportunity to give our, to give staff, you know, the raise that would keep them from falling further behind market, we have to ask staff to work on it. You know, we have to ask them to try to build a budget that can do this. Mike has already told us he thinks 3 percent is feasible. I know he's got three or four caveats and six or seven more pieces of data to collect and, you know, lines to extend and curves to work. But if we don't ask them to do it, they can't, right? They're going to, we're going to be back in the same place 30, 60 days from now, looking at, you know, okay, it's 2 percent, which is essentially what happened last year. So I would encourage us to ask staff to try to achieve the goal we want them to achieve, and if they come back to us and say, look, if you want to do that, you're going to have to do either this or this, and, you know, these are some cuts, these are revenues that you, revenue gains you could have, and we can decide then. It's like, okay, well, if you, we can't, we aren't willing to do that, we might be willing to do part of that, and this is what you're ending up with. But the sort of holding on to the status quo and pushing the ball, kicking the can down the road, in both the short term, I mean, in the next 30 to 45 days, and the long term, the next two, three, four years, you know, is a recipe for continued underperformance that we have seen over the last few years.
It would have been fantastic if you all could have had this discussion back October 15th of last year.
Well, the market conditions change every year, and we have to sit through a budget and decide whether we want to hire even more police officers and pave our streets, put too many dollars in our roads, or whether the state legislature is going to amend our budget. So all these things are things we deal with, and we choose to have this process, and Rebecca's absolutely right. It's a bit of a frustrating process to have this discussion, and then come back a month and a half from now, and then we're having to make decisions between fire trucks and raising taxes and what we're going to do. And, you know, that's just a transparent discussion we're having right now. And the committee has done work and pulled data, and they have a recommendation, and ultimately, the full council on our end has to kind of make a call on that. You've heard differing views on this. It's difficult to make a pay increase decision in a vacuum. The world doesn't exist in a vacuum. We're processed. So we are in a similar situation where we were last year. But there is a motion on the floor, and the motion has been seconded, so is there any further discussion on the motion?
I'll speak in favor of the motion. I guess two things rise to, for me, in terms of concerns here. One is I've been concerned for a long time about the turnover down at City Hall at various levels, and there could be a lot of reasons for that. This is not necessarily a magic bullet that's going to solve that problem, but it is a piece of, is part of the picture, I think, that can address it. And secondly, thinking longer term, I'm concerned about the trajectory of getting us in a hole, and that's a real concern. And I think that at this point in the process, in our budget process, what we have to do is ask the question of priorities, how important, how significant is this particular issue of pay increase? And for me, it rises to the level of putting it at a priority. I understand that we may have to make decisions down the road that cut other things out that we want to do for our city and for our services. But this rises to the level of a priority that I think we do need to direct staff to work this in. Michael said that he's looking at scenarios of how to do that, and so I speak in support of the motion to have staff put this as a priority in the sense of putting it in the budget process that we're into, for me, to help address those two significant concerns, turnover and long-term planning in a way that doesn't get us into a hole, a bigger hole.
And I'm open to amendment on this. I mean, you know, Mike said he thinks 3 percent is feasible. If you guys, if people think 3 percent is, you know, a better, you know, a better target than 3.2 percent, I'm open for amending this to that. You know, there are other, there's other figures up there on the benchmarks that might be, that if somebody believes is a safer or more prudent call, I'm defending the committee's recommendation, but I'm certainly willing to be, to consider alternatives if somebody thinks.
If it helps to bring, to bring consensus to our group, I could revise my thinking to 3 percent, but I wouldn't want to go below that.
So is that an amendment?
No, it's not, unless somebody else makes an amendment. I'm going to stick with the recommendation until somebody else amends it, but I'll support the amendment.
I do want a question to leave that, Terry?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Smith.
Okay. I guess my question would be to my peers, because I can't, I can't make a vote on that there personally, but I can voice my opinion. And I agree with all of you about the decision that we take there, because we want to do that. So when we give direction to our staff, I want us to all make sure that we're aware, that that being, if we're looking at our campus pool or having to admit cuts ongoing, it would be very challenging for me to sit with my peers, and when we have to make decisions on certain things that have to be cut, and those things may be in your area, but those things are used to help. But then you are not willing to cut those because you want to make sure that we give the pay raises. So we have a political conflict, it is a very delicate balance. So if we raise taxes like we do before, then we shouldn't have, then we run into a break ball. So we have to make sure that we have that delicate balance and be very careful with the direction that we're giving our staff. Now, I don't mind looking at a 3, 4, 5, 6, 3 percent, but at the same time, I'm not, I don't want to put ourselves in a position that we can't look at something like a 2.7 percent. look at something like a 2.7 that can be managed and maintained. But that's just my opinion, I don't want to lock that in too much, at a 3% or 3.2, and put them in a situation where they're really cutting some services, because I know that I have areas where things need, my areas, I need, but in some respects, some areas they're not. If you guys are willing to use your jobs, then I think it's okay when you're doing 3.2. But if not, I think, I think we should give them a range of, from a 2.7, maybe to 3.2, and then show up as a total, for what we're cutting, so that we can make an intelligent decision.
To be short, with all that's going on at Rainbow, all the new buildings and everything that's being built, you're not going to sit here and cut your employees 0.2%.
We already have a budget, it's at 2%. So we have a budget that's already planned at 2%, and this is a recommended increase to that budget. So that's what we're considering, and also, we're making it involve 20% of knowledge of what our entire budget has been holding out there. So you can't do that. So that's the discussion we have.
Yeah, the important thing to remember here is that in order to fund an increase, I think that it's been, this conference has been made, there will have to be concessions in other parts of the country. I mean, yeah, I mean, so we don't have an additional $375,000 of the new revenues that, we'll have to be redirections from other areas of the budget more than that.
So on one hand, I think, while, while pay increase is like, well, that's the budget, that's the cost, but I guess to me, you have like the cost of doing business in the city of GUC, and then you have, what does it take to keep the employees that have to execute on the plan that gets the work done? And you manage that, that total cost, but I think you have to be really careful about saying, well, we're going to be on the cheap in terms of the employees, without worrying about the true up that comes another two or three years, we're already falling behind on that, you know, we'll just, we'll just, we'll use that as a mechanism of being able to save money on the back of the employees. I think ultimately, you're going to have to paint the pipe on that regardless, and in the meantime, you're going to lose some of the better people. Yes to Mayor, Rick, and you guys are, you have to manage all of it, but be careful lumping it together and saying, we have these costs and we can't afford to keep good employees, we can't afford to recruit good employees, because that, those are the folks that execute on making that thing work, whatever it is. And I think that's the last place that I would, to your point, I don't see that as a priority, I think it all matters, that's the last place you want to cut, are the people in their tip of the spear, and ones that are making it happen for the city and GUC and those services that are provided.
Well, I think Ms. Smith brings up a good point in our discussion, is that, you know, it's a matter of, everyone has priorities, but as we look at the budget as a whole, being able to find a way to measure those priorities, put them into human capital or what you do. And again, I hate to keep coming back to the same point, but we have this discussion, and then we go back and do the other 80% of our budget process, and that's not difficult. Everybody would love to get every employee a 5% to 10% pay raise, but ultimately, we have to pay streets, pay our firemen, police force, the projects, the quality life that people want to have, and balance that out. I think the main discussion here is, you know, we're looking at people here, budget, rather than making this decision today based off the full budget process. We do it every year. Mr. Smiley?
Except this is an opportunity for us to establish our priorities, right? Staff's going to be working on something, work on this, and they're going to be moving through on this, and they have to know what our priorities are, and, you know, there will work to make our priorities, you know, to fit our priorities into the budget. And if we say that our priorities are not to, you know, give employees a market raise, they're not going to work on that. If we say that it is, then they will work on it. You know, it wasn't so long ago, you know, a few months, when we were singing the staff's praises, you know, for their extraordinary response to, to the events of last fall. And we were talking about what a great job they did and how everybody had gone above and beyond, and I think, you know, nice words are fine, you know, it's always good to give people a pat on the back, but at the end of the day, you know, I think that if we're serious about that, then we should, you know, give them a market-based raise. That's the way in which you reward extraordinary performance, and I think that's what we've seen in the last year. I think that, you know, we need to establish now as a priority for the remaining 80% of our budget, that we would like that budget to be developed with a priority toward giving our employees a market-based raise, rather than doing everything else and coming back at the end and seeing what's left.
One thing I would like to say, you know, and I think Ms. Blunt had it right, here we are again, this is the same thing I was going through today, here we are again, we're at the exact same point that we were last year. You know, and my problem is, we made no adjustments whatsoever, and I'm not faulting Greenwood Utilities for this. I feel like, you know, at some point, you know, the people that are on the joint pay committee, you know, are at the meeting, they understand what's going on, but then they leave, and they're the only two people that know what's going on. You know, I didn't know anything else beyond this packet that I had, as far as what was going on, and then here we go, we make a decision that we're going to go ahead and just put, we're going to give a 3.2% raise, but we have no, no idea, you know, where it came from, those numbers, except for what's in writing. I mean, I read every page in here, you know, and I agree with the fact that we need to give the employees a raise, but my hesitation is, what in the world is going on with the process, and why haven't we changed that after two years of being in the same exact position? You know, in my opinion, we need to, whoever's on the committee needs to be on the committee, we need to go back to council, sit down and say, hey, this is where we're at, this is where Greenwood Utilities is at, hash it out there, and then come here so we don't have so much discourse as far as where everybody's at. You know, after talking, you know, listening to some other people talk here, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, like you said, the human capital issue, I mean, you get what, you get what you pay out as employees. Let's be completely honest, I mean, you showed that you're not appreciative of your employees, you're going to get that out of them, you know, and one of the things that you want as a business owner, I know I want, is I want efficiency, I want somebody that's going to be there doing their best at all times, and when you don't feel appreciated, you know, you can say that that's not important, but it is important, it's extremely important to know that, you know, you're appreciated. I just gave one of my employees a raise last week, I think, and it was far more than 3.2% off the record, but...
What was your return on investment?
A lot. She's really good at what she does.
There you go.
And, you know, I mean, listen to it, maybe this is what we have to do as a city, maybe we have to strong our, you know, our budget process and say, make it work. I mean, if it, I'm not in favor with raising taxes, nor will I ever approve raising taxes, because I think that, you know, as a city, as our growth pattern, even though we have $6 billion off the record, or off the tax rolls, that's an issue that we're going to have to deal with at some point, but we should never have to raise taxes, but this is an opportunity for the cities to step up and say, we're going to go ahead and compensate our employees duly, and have the city manager and the city management office go ahead and make it work without raising taxes, without raising fees. But I think it's, you know, to me, it was the same repetitive thing, over and over, here we go, we're going to go back, and then we call Greenwood Utilities up to the last minute and say, hey, sorry, you know, we've only got 2%, or they've already told their employer, not, maybe their employees have listened to say that we're going to get 3% or whatever it was in our budget last year, maybe 2.8%. But it just kind of sends a terrible message, it's like, to the employees, this is the same thing that happened last year, and it looks stupid, and we're supposed to be the smart ones up here. I don't know. You know, so I guess I've had a change of heart here.
I'm terribly sorry. Never do it again.
Well, there is a motion, a motion to the second, so is there any other discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, unless there's any other discussion, all in favor of the motion, and uncommitted and recommended. Is it a game, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Next slide.
From a Greenwood Utilities Commission standpoint, the same motion is on the table, our, our peers are making a motion on the table.
Second.
At second, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Those likes and approve. Thank you.
Move to approve the 2.1% salary structure adjustment.
It's a motion to approve the salary adjustment, it's seconded on this motion. Any discussion for members of council on this item? Seeing none, all in favor of this, indicate a say aye. Aye. Oppose. That passes. Ms. Chairman?
From the GUC standpoint, same motion is on the table.
Move to increase the salary structure by 2.4%.
Motion and second, discussion. All in favor of aye? Those likes and? Approved, thank you.
Is that all our business this time? All right. Motion to adjourn, we have ordered, Mr. Mercer, second. Mr. Smiley, electric, please, say aye. Aye. Oppose. See House, confirm.
Aye.